We'll call the regular meeting of Paramount City Council to order. The pledge will be led by Councilmember Gillan, the invocation by Reverend Brett Grady Jones of New Commandment Baptist Church. You all please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray, please. Father God, as I come before you, President, thanking you for another day. Thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness, Father God, you shone toward mankind. Come to this meeting, Father God, invite your presence to be with us, Father God, to govern this meeting that you have, according to your will and your way. Thank for the progress that this city, Father God, the leaders have put out so much to themselves, Father God, to make this city a model city for the world. Thank you for your guidance, divine healing upon them, Father God, that they would continue to lead this city in the way that you would have to go. That nothing impede the progress of this city, Father God, you might get the glory and honor. For every citizen in this church, Father God, every business, every church, every school in this church, Father, with the covering of your blood, your son, Jesus Christ. Then pray for those folk, Father God, whose tornado areas, volcano areas, Father God, who destroyed some of their lives and people. Pray for America and the world as a whole, as peace need to come forth. So we thank you for what you're doing, what you're going to do for this city, continue to keep it in your perfect divine will. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Motion to excuse Mayor Martinez.
Second.
And moved in second into excuse Mayor Martinez. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gillan? Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. City Council, public comment updates.
Yes, Madam, or, excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor and Counsel. We did at the May 15th City Council meeting have a resident, Ms. Sarah Patricia Weso, came to discuss with the council her concern about recently planted trees that look dry and possibly dead. So, just as a follow-up, staff talked to Ms. Weso and checked into the newly planted trees throughout the city. And it should be known that the city's tree trimming contractor has been consistently monitoring the trees and has replaced up to five trees so far since the planting date that we had for Arbor Day. The other trees will be continued to be monitored for health purposes and we will replace them as needed. So, some of them are brown, but that's just according to our arborists, the natural growth process they go through and then eventually they'll, they will go green. But if they do not, again, the tree trimming contractor will replace them. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Public comments?
Yes, sir. We have a number of them. We have two for item number seven and three for item number eight. And we will call you up, for those of you that have filled out speakers cards for those items, we'll call you up when those items are upon us. But we do have one speaker's card from Mr. Ardi and he, his question is about a game plan. Mr. Ardi?
How's everyone doing? First, I want to thank you guys for, I want to stay positive on this, so the first thing, I want to get all the good stuff out. The first stuff is, I appreciate everyone's hard work here. I know it sometimes goes unnoticed or ungrateful. This is, I don't want to come off like that in this. I appreciate everyone's time and hard work on this, especially knowing that no one's becoming a millionaire doing what you guys are doing. So I appreciate all the work. Second thing that I loved was the banners put up on the city for our students that are going to UCLA, UC Irvine. Beautiful touch. I loved it. Applaud that. But I was just, just, you know, I'm bored, I have nothing better to do. And I was going through pretty much the game plan of what this city's future looks like. And I went through the website and I combed everything and I didn't really find anything that, and maybe I don't know where it is, so if I'm ignorant on it, please show it to me, I'd gladly look it. But I couldn't find what our future of Paramount looks like. And I drove around the entire city, I saw very little development. And then when I asked some questions about like, for example, like the steel craft that's being built in Bellflower and why we lost out on that, something that we could really use something like a steel craft, I didn't get a great answer on that. It was more like a shrug shoulders of businesses are going to do what businesses do. And I wanted to say like, do we have a game plan of how to entice businesses to come to Paramount? Do we have that? And if there is, please, I would love to read it or know about it. It just seems that everything is, we're just kind of like what my dad said about me one day. He says, "You're doing the bare minimum. You barely clean your room just enough so no one yells at you. You get the C minus just enough to pass." And it's just like, I feel like we, I don't want to say in particular, I think even as people, as whatever, we're giving that, I feel like bare minimum. And like, our schools, besides Abraham Lincoln Elementary, they all were ranked below, they were ranked fours, fives. I just want to see like, what is the future holding? And like, I'm just like, every meeting I've gone to here, we've talked about how great the Chipotle is that's being built here. And it's like, no one cares about the Chipotle, it's 2018. And I think we just need to set our sights higher. What are we doing? We have already controversy of our air quality, our schools are bare minimum, our parks are nothing to write home about, we have no nightlife. Like, what's the game plan? What are we looking forward to? What are we, what, I don't know any, of any new development that would get me excited about. And then I believe it was two, two or three meetings ago, we spent $300,000 on some artwork on the bottom to make it all nice. That's great and all, but like, maybe if we should commission a wall for a nice mural to get people to come take pictures. Social media is the key. People will come down and take pictures with it and then, you know, shop at our stores, go to our restaurants. Like, we need like an energy to come in. Thank you very much.
No further ones, right?
No, sir.
Okay, consent calendar.
Second.
Yeah, Ms. Weso, we have you down for wanting to speak on item number seven, the AQMD. Oh, okay, because it just says AQMD. Do you want to, it's up to the Vice Mayor if you'd like.
Fine.
No, okay. Why don't you come forward?
There's another thing.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Patricia Weso. I am coming back regarding the trees. I noticed that you guys did replant some of those trees and some of those trees are coming back alive, so thank you for that. Another thing I wanted to say was, I wanted to talk about the Brown Act. It says that regular meetings must be noticed through the posting of an agenda at least 72 hours before the meeting. Now, I went online and I did not find the agenda regarding this meeting. I tried calling today around 3:47 and I got the voicemail saying that City Hall was closed. So I want to know what the hours of City Hall are. Then I called back around 4:45 and I still got the voicemail saying City Hall was closed. So I just wanted to mention that. Also, when I'm looking at your agenda, it says, "Update on air monitoring plan for Paramount under new business." How is that new business if we've been discussing this for a couple of years now? And then another thing that I wanted to mention was that it says, again, under the Brown Act, "Agenda descriptions must not be misleading. According to the California Attorney General's Guide to the Brown Act, the purpose of the brief general description is to inform interested members of the public about the subject matter under consideration so that they can determine whether to monitor or participate in the meeting of the body. For example, using the agenda item flood control to refer to a discussion on a request to Congress to exempt a certain stream from the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act would be clearly inadequate." Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I mean, our phones are not shut off or answering machines at 3 o'clock, are they?
No, sir. We continue to take calls throughout the day after 3 o'clock, yes. I'm not sure exactly what telephone number Ms. Weso was contacting.
Actually, I think it's a computer glitch. I've had it happen to me before.
You have, okay.
Yeah, and then called a direct line and reported it. So I think it's a programming, because they program them to go off and on at a certain time.
Okay.
And, yeah, so it's happened, it's happened before in the past, we reported and it's been fixed. They think it's a programming issue.
Okay. I apologize for that, Ms. Weso. And we do have the agenda posted online. A lot of times when it is a thick agenda, when it's heavy, it takes a while to load, so you will get a blank screen at first and then eventually it'll come on. I checked it today and it was online for sure then, so I'm just, you know.
Okay. Thank you. If you need to address, you need to come forward.
Doesn't have a card.
Not from the audience.
He doesn't have a card.
Yes. Right.
It would probably be good if you gave a direct number, staff did, to somebody that they can bypass the voicemail and when they're not getting the agenda up. And once again, there are computers, there's glitches. I had people today calling me over a video that was on a website and half the people could download it and half of them couldn't. So sometimes it's a setting on your own computer, sometimes, like you said, it's the file. So if we could put maybe a phone number on the website, if you have trouble downloading the agenda, call this. Yeah, because if we can't catch it when they say it, we can't really deal with it.
Okay. You got it. It's a good suggestion.
Okay, if you, if you do have something under public comment, you can come forward.
Good afternoon to all of you. Thanks for letting me speak. I just want to talk about AQMD. I know very soon they're going to be moving the monitors out.
This is an agenda item already. Do you wish to speak during that time?
Okay, I'll do it.
Let's do it, Ben.
What happened is when I signed my car, they say, "Oh, no, we can't," and I got here at 6:02.
Well, I'm letting you speak, though, so we'll do that under that agenda item, okay? Consent calendar.
I was, I moved it, I think Daryl seconded it. And I think we have roll call. Yeah, we have.
We got down to that, okay. Motion was made by Lemon, seconded by Hoffmeyer. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number six is an update on the air monitoring plan for Paramount.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, it's actually item number seven. Yeah, no problem. Our first item tonight is an oral presentation by Dr. Jason Low of the South Coast AQMD. Dr. Low is here to update us on AQMD's air monitoring plan for Paramount. We recently notified that AQMD will be revising their plan for the samplers that are located throughout the city. So we asked Dr. Low to come in and inform the city council. And he will also inform us about an upcoming town hall meeting regarding this exact same topic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jason Low of the South Coast AQMD.
Great. Thank you very much, John, for the introduction. Good evening, council members. Good evening for the Paramount. As John said, I'll be here to provide an update on the Paramount monitoring. And one thing to note is that, to date, Paramount air monitoring effort has been one of the largest in South Coast AQMD history as far as a air monitoring compliance and enforcement campaign. It says on the slide, it started October 2016 to present. However, just remind you that we were here before when the initial complaints started in 2012, 2013, and probably even before that, with air monitoring efforts to start. And then we enhanced that monitoring effort in 2016, where we then discovered the highly elevated levels of hexavalent chromium. The total estimated costs, and this is leverage cost with existing assets from AQMD, is over $2 million to the agency. And the final bottom line result is that the elevated levels of hexavalent chromium, the continuous elevated levels of hexavalent chromium have been reduced within a few months. And in general, the levels since November 2017 have been much lower than those initial high levels. We couldn't have done it without the help of many collaborating agencies. Of note is the city of Paramount, including this council, definitely the city management, and the community that have helped create a lot of input and resources for our agency to operate. It's also good to recognize the other agencies, such as California Resources Board, DTSE, EPA, who have also provided resources, and also EPA, who have provided resources. With that, we've been able to perform many joint inspections, combine a lot of more information across agencies that have allowed us to basically enhance the investigation to get us to the point where we are right now. With that, we also held a lot of joint agency calls. We had a lot of community, weekly calls with community, multiple town hall meetings, as well as presence here and from the council to provide updates. Just in general, I think many of you are aware of our strategy for this program, which is, a lot of the projects started with the community, where a lot of the complaints came in. We responded with our compliance team. We started that air monitoring, which looked and discovered the elevated levels. And then from there, we worked with facilities to reduce the levels, whether it be voluntary through the permit process, whether it be through the stipulated order of abatement, or other measures to help reduce those levels. And then maintain that communication, providing updates of which today and also the upcoming town hall meeting, to provide the city and the community information with regards to our efforts. With that, just a brief update on our compliance information. On the chart, it says that it's providing information for both Paramount and North Longbey. So I apologize, I wasn't able in time to kind of separate everything just exclusively for Paramount. But it's to note that I was at least able to get that, in Paramount, there's about 100 active facilities that have permits with AQMD. And there's, in total, for the past few years, about 1,300 complaints from Paramount. So that's 13 out of the 4,000 between the two cities. With regards to air monitoring, which is the focus of this presentation, we conducted air monitoring at over 38 locations within the city of Paramount. And this doesn't include 12 of the schools that, with the assistance of the California Air Resources Board, was able to sample and collect at the schools. The city itself, also through action, were able to supplement some of that monitoring effort with the acquisition, with the purchase of the city, of five monitors which are active. Four of them are active right now, one is currently being repaired within the city. So just to provide an update with regards to that. In addition, wherever there was elevated levels, we looked at some of the facilities, both through our inspections, but also through onsite measurements to identify the processes where the hexavalent chromium could be emitted from. And then from there, implemented a couple of rule actions that looked at those specific sources, so the entire basin would be able to benefit from what we've learned in Paramount. And finally, in the effort for transparency, providing all the data and our actions available online at our website. So this graphic shows the progression of the monthly average levels of hexavalent chromium from when the enhanced monitoring effort started back in October 2016, which is the lower left panel. You can see that the levels of hexavalent chromium, red denotes over 10 nanograms per cubic meter, green is less than 1 nanogram per cubic meter. When we started off in October 2016, there were several locations that were over 10 and over 5. And as mentioned previously, since November 2017, the levels on a monthly basis have been relatively low. There have been some elevated levels on a sample-per-sample basis, but for the majority of the results have been, have been low. This is highlighted, and this graph has been seen several times before, just extending out through May 2018, you can see that the average levels were very high, up to 13 on a monthly average at, to the facilities that we're monitoring at. And they also have orders of abatement, both aircraft and eneplex. Those levels have declined significantly and have continued to remain at those lower levels, with exception to a small bump last year in July. So to provide an update to our monitoring plan, this map denotes kind of a key for how it will progress forward. The sites in blue will continue to monitor at a slightly less frequency than previously established. We were conducting air monitoring, one sample every three days at all of our sites. And at certain sites, we are reducing that to one in six. These are sites that are what we consider key sites for kind of area-wide monitoring to make sure that certain areas, you can see that like sites 23 and 19 are within southern Paramount, so we can still keep track of the levels of hexavalent chromium in those areas. And then also up to the northeast, where, you know, those are also key areas, kind of east of the industrial side of, that side of Paramount. The sites in yellow, or in white, are the ones that are going to continue on a one- and three-day basis, because those are ones that are nearby the facilities that were previously known to emit the high levels of hexavalent chromium. And lastly, the ones in orange are ones that have concluded monitoring on a regular basis. It doesn't mean that we can't come back. It just means at this point, they're just not going to be scheduled as part of the ongoing measurement regime. Part of this is that we're shifting efforts to identifying other sources of hexavalent chromium. The California Resources Board with us had contracted out with UC San Diego to do a real-time mobile platform measurement of total metals. And their report is about to be finalized. I think they're in the draft report form and they should be finalizing that, I'm hoping within the next month for public release and perhaps we can give an update on that. AQMD also used its own resources to deploy a real-time monitoring of total metals and also hexavalent chromium through a different contractor who, contractors who had that capability. And we had them also go through the streets of Paramount to give us an idea, an assessment of those locations. We also anticipate results coming within the next couple of months from that effort. We also initiated a concrete cutting-grinding pilot project to see what kind of preliminary results would come off of that. And we initiated the study portion of it, so we'll be finalizing the results of that fairly soon as well. We have just finalized a contract with UC Riverside, with their group there, to look at furnace emissions. So we just finalized a contract and we'll have a kickoff meeting in the next two weeks with the professors there that are involved, so that way we can identify perhaps some conditions for them to test furnaces and to see if that affects hexavalent chromium emissions coming from furnaces. So some of the next steps, just in brief, are to continue on the compliance side to inspect facilities on a regular basis to see if there's any potential issues relative to hexavalent chromium emissions, total metals emissions, or any other type of emissions that may be impacting the Paramount community. We still will continue air monitoring as per the updated plan, as I mentioned, and that plan can change. If we do find some other elevated levels that we need to go in and enhance that effort, we are going to do that. But at this point, you know, the levels that we've seen kind of weren't that updated plan regime. And then right now, I know previously, the city of Paramount was committed to continue kind of ongoing, so we will be working with the city on that and also help work with them on identifying potential other resources to help with that continued air monitoring plan. We'll also continue rule development. As mentioned, we have a rule that are passed with relative to grinding. We have a rule that's going through the board process in the next couple of months with regards to metal plating. And then another one later in the year with regards to heat treating. So as we identify other potential sources, they will also be transformed into the rule side of AQMD. And then lastly, as John mentioned, I think we're confirmed for a date for a town hall meeting, so it will be the rest of the senior members, including compliance, planning, to be included as part of the panel to answer questions and provide updates on June 20th. And we'll have a location to be announced, hopefully shortly. I was hoping to have it now, but, so I can announce it here, but we will announce it on our website and through our emails and I'm sure working with the city. So that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor Hanson, may I?
Yes.
The real-time monitoring from UC San Diego, you said you were waiting for the data from that? It had already been deployed?
So it's, yes, that has already been deployed back in December. So right now, since California Resources Board was the one who provided funding for that, they're the ones that have the report. So it's in draft format and they should be able to share the final results, hopefully very shortly.
How long did, was that deployed? Was it a one-day event?
No, it was, it was for multiple days. I believe the total deployment was between four and seven days, total of measurements.
And is that some type of equipment that they're looking at to, once there's an issue in a city? Because I can see that being very valuable, you know, if you can target exactly when it's happening and where it's coming from.
Absolutely. I mean, it provides flexibility. I can't say that's the one-all solution.
Right.
Because it provides a snapshot, because it is driving through the city, so some of the emissions from facilities may be intermittent. So if it's passing through an area that's, you know, it may not be doing operating. I mean, I think right now, I mean, it's some good news in terms of, you know, we haven't seen any continuous elevated levels of anything that we've been looking at, but it provides an extra layer of ensuring that we are kind of capturing, geographically anyway, what levels of metals are out there, at least with that contract. With the contract that we had with DRI and Aerodyne, they have total metals, hexavalent chromium, and a few other instruments that can measure gases. So we're looking forward to see what the results are. They were out, they were out for a period of two and a half weeks. And that was earlier this year.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The other question I have is, I think you said that this was your largest monitoring effort and that there was an expense of about $2 million. So how does that compare to like, what was the name of the company in Newport Beach?
The one in Newport.
H, right?
Yeah.
Right, so that would be Hickson. Hickson Metals.
Because I understand that's been going on for years and years and years.
So when you're looking at one facility, I mean, that was kind of a known factor because that one facility was isolated. We did a lot of measurements there as well. We did, we did work with them and we did have ongoing. But as far as when you're looking at the number of sites, the comprehensiveness of looking at the collaboration and also looking at the rule development portion of that, I mean, there are other parts of the agency that were fully engaged, as well as different partners, which is something that we didn't do for Newport.
What kind of difference is there in those numbers? If we're at $2 million, can you give me something that's more standard in another community? I mean, how does it compare?
Significantly less than that.
Like significantly?
I mean, like, let's put in context of like, I mean, when we are looking at, let's say like Aliso Canyon, I mean, that's a, right, good benchmark, just because, you know, we just came off of Aliso Canyon. The well got sealed in February, we were going through a reduction strategy there, given that the problem was solved. You know, we were there for a few months and, you know, I'd say that we're on the order of a little bit more than a million, but I don't think.
A little more than what?
One million.
One million. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Further questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So your updated plan that you were speaking of, how many monitors exactly will you be removing from the city?
So, in the updated plan, it showed that, I think, five that were reflected in orange, let me double count here, so. One, two, three, four, five. So five from the existing were removed last week.
So you'll still be deploying how many throughout the state?
Until, we have seven that are going to one and three near the facilities. And then there's the four area-wide ones that are still remaining. And then there's one still at Gaines.
Do you have a number?
So one plus four plus seven is 12.
Okay. Will any of the ones that are going to be removed, are they any of the multi-level metal monitor detections like at Promise Hospital or near the district?
No, so that real-time deployment, we have two actually multi-metals that are near real-time. So one of them is at Promise Hospital, one of them is east of Carlton Ford, west of Lincoln Elementary. So those two are still remaining.
Okay. We're talking about money, $2 million. I was just told today that there's three kids at Mokler with cancer, so really the money doesn't come into play for me. It's more about getting the air levels healthy enough where we don't have to have kids dying of cancer. So I just had some qualm about the way you started the presentation with about the money, because you can't put a price tag on somebody's child dying of cancer. Then we have the other child dying of cancer, that's supposed to be a child for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and there's a lot of kids with cancer. So the money to me isn't an issue. That's why AQMD recovers some of their money from the fines and the violations that the polluters are putting out there. And I understand it's a lot of money, but you can't put a price tag on kids, on anyone for that matter. So my other question is, I know there's, I understand that they need to take out some of the monitors for other communities. I get that. But I know there's going to be a pilot program with these newer hexavalent chromium monitors, and I just want it to be on the record with you that Paramount should be the first community that gets elected if they, when they have this pilot program for these new hex-chrome monitors, that, you know, there's supposed to be a pilot program. And it concerns me because when you say that we are in a better position than we were in November of 2016, well, I hope so, because those were unprecedented numbers, right? So I would hope and pray that, of course, we have lowered, you know, where we were from that day, but your own colleagues told me today that... from that day, but your own colleagues told me today that they are as concerned for Paramount today as they were in November of 16. True, the numbers have dropped, but we still have a lot of reason to be concerned, and that's why I want to make sure that you understand, and you can take it back, that when this pilot program comes on, comes about with these new hexavalent detectors, real-time analysis, that Paramount needs to be the first.
It already was, as mentioned.
Right, but it needs to be an ongoing. There's going to be some pilot programs where it's an ongoing monitoring. That was kind of the test for the pilot, but when they actually get going and cities are selected, I want to make sure Paramount's first to sign up for that.
Sure, so if I can shed some light on that. So I believe you're talking about the Assembly Bill 617. So AQMD has recommendations that can go to the California Air Resources Board. The California Air Resources Board is the one that decides in finality which communities are prioritized. So I believe at this moment Paramount is on the list of AQMD recommendations, but the cardboard ultimately decides the final portion. Of course, you know, it's through a public process, so obviously, you know, through the public process, people have a role in being able to provide potential support in that.
Right, but you're the experts, AQMD is the experts, and I would hope that since you've been here so long in Paramount, that you would instill the need here in Paramount. Also, one of the monitors I noticed that you were taking out, is that going to be north of Alondra, east of Garfield, west of Paramount Boulevard? Because there was always some spikes there that were never identified.
If you can identify with the number.
It's not on my screen right now. It was the blue that where you were going to be taking some out?
The ones in orange were the ones being taken out. So there are monitors that are remaining in place for the most part for every orange one that's being taken out. So for example, like 23 is capturing an area similar to 24, 27. 19 is capturing a similar area, that 31 would be removed. 37 was more of an upwind site for north Long Beach.
Right, but we border north Long Beach, so that's important for us. Let me see if I had any other notes that I took down while you were speaking. Is it now the concern with the hexavalent chromium, that with the chrome platers, I know we only have one here in Paramount, and there's other cities with more chrome platers, is that one of the reasons why you're taking out some of the monitors to go into East LA?
So the city of Compton, yes, and also some preliminary information indicates that Compton may need some resources to do some extra monitoring.
And like I said, I understand that other communities need the monitoring as well, but, you know, there's still a lot of concerns here in Paramount, and I just want to make sure that no one walks away thinking, oh, everything's fine?
Right, I don't think that's our message at this point. I mean, I think our messaging through the rule development and through just monitoring, I mean, notice I haven't said the word "safe," I haven't said the word, you know, to indicate that. There is still work to be done, to your point, and we're not done, which is why we're looking at other sources, because, you know, we were able to find two major ones within the city, and we recognize that there may be potentially more, which is why we're trying to do more of the widespread portion of identifying potential other sources through the contract with UCR to look at furnaces, because the furnaces may produce something that we need to look at. Then that's something we need to look at just in the city of Paramount, but also, you know, within the basin.
Okay, well, thanks for everything you've done. I appreciate the way you have voted every single time when it comes to the city of Paramount and getting the resources that they need, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
Further questions?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, just so you know, we do have a location for the town hall meeting on June 20th that Dr. Lowe spoke about, and that's at the Community Center, so the Paramount Community Center on June the 20th at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And we'll have that up on our environmental website as well as the city website.
Okay. Any further questions from the council before we have some public comment on this? No? Okay, we did have some cards on this particular item?
Yes, sir, we do have two. Well, actually, Ms. Weesaw, if you're still -- oh, did you want to speak on this item? Okay, go ahead and come on up.
Again, my name is Sarah Patricia Westall. I do want to thank the AQMD for their efforts in trying to assess the situation with the chromium six. However, as a resident and as a parent... Sorry, I'm still concerned. I'm still concerned for myself, for our neighbors, for my children, for all these children that go to these schools. I am looking at all the data from the monitors that AQMD have posted. Edwards, Keppel, Zamboni, Jackson, Gaines, Mokler, Alondra, Los Toritos, Tanner, Paralon High School West, Roosevelt. All have information that is not available. Everything is gray. So how can we say things are better if all of the data isn't here? It's been gray for all those schools since August 23rd, 2017, and the paper that I printed out today, the latest date it has is April 23rd, 2018. So as a parent, there is still a lot of work to be done. We still don't have the air filters for our air purifiers in our schools. We still don't have -- I've been asking the city council for over a year if you guys are looking into grants to get air purifiers for our residents in the hot zones. I still don't have a response. So there's still a lot of work to be done, and just like how we're looking for grants for electric vehicles and we're looking for grants to plant trees, you guys need to help and look for grants for these air purifiers for our residents. We can't pretend, okay, well, the levels are lower and that's okay. No. The chromium six is still in the air. Our children are breathing it. Our children are playing outside, breathing that stuff. Our residents are dying of cancer. Please, we need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, our next speaker's card, regard number item seven, is from Ms. Lynda Johnson from Supervisor Han's office. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and esteemed members of the council and staff. I'm Lynda Johnson, the field deputy, and speaking on behalf of LA County Supervisor Janice Han. Since coming into office in December of 2016, Supervisor Han has worked hard for the residents of Paramount to ensure that good quality, good air quality was a priority and that businesses were compliant with maintaining acceptable levels of hexavalent chromium. Supervisor Han is pleased to hear that with the help of AQMD, Department of Public Health, and the city council, that together we are now at a point that air quality in the city of Paramount is at a safer level than it was almost two years ago. Yes, there is still much work to be done. Our office will continue to follow the updates provided by AQMD and, if needed, deploy our own county resources. Currently, our office is working with Paramount Unified School District to conduct testing on the indoor quality of air at the school sites. We are all on the same page, our office as well as the Paramount Unified School District, to ensure that our students are in a safe environment. In fact, we do have a meeting with Paramount Unified next week, and really, the issues that we have with them is basically the verbiage on the indemnification clause. So they have always been on the same page as our office. Thank you to AQMD and the city council for working with our office to get where we are at today. Thank you to the school district for the collaborative efforts with our county council and our staff. As always, Supervisor Han remains committed to the city and its residents of the fourth district and to the city of Paramount. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further?
No, sir.
No further? Okay. It was just a report, okay, we're to item number eight, resolution number 18.016, city council permit, live entertainment. De Herdez Corporation de Lucia, 14123 Garfield Avenue.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. The next item is a review of an application for a live entertainment permit submitted by De Lucia Bar. This is the former location of the Torino Lounge on Garfield Avenue, as you can see the outside of the building there, north of Rosecrans. If you recall, the city council revoked a previous live entertainment permit in early 2016. At that time, the Sheriff's Department and our deputy district attorney were both recommending denial of this application. The recommendation was based on the number and the types of law enforcement responses that were found at the location. And so for the latest requests in your packet tonight, you'll see the Lakewood Station Captain Rick Harpom is opposed to this request, as well as our deputy district attorney. So tonight, in place of Kevin Chun, who is out sick this week, we have John Carver, the Assistant Community Development Director, who will handle this item. John?
Thank you, John. Mr. Vice Mayor and council members, I've got a presentation to go through. And as John mentioned, this is a city council permit to allow live entertainment, and this would include live bands and a DJ, and it's at the De Lucia Lounge at 14123 Garfield Avenue. And this is, again, the former location of the Torino Lounge. In January of this year, ABC issued a license for the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption, and in February of this year, De Lucia opened for business. The business owners, Jose Hernandez, who's also the property owner, and Joseph Hernandez, are the applicants, and the restaurant operates between the hours of 11:00 AM and 1:00 AM, Sunday through Wednesday, and Thursdays through Saturdays from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And the proposed format for the live entertainment would be on Fridays from 8:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and that would include musicians, and they would be playing trios, flamenco, bossa nova, pop music, and also a DJ. And then on Saturdays, live entertainment is proposed from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM, and the musicians would be playing Spanish rock, 80 Tributes bands, and also a DJ. And then on Sundays, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, mariachi. And here's a look at the De Lucia on Garfield, north of Rosecrans, and the property is outlined in red, and the lounge is circled in orange. Little bit of history, in October of 2011, the city council approved a live entertainment permit for Torino Lounge, and the applicant was Francisca Ramirez-Pena and Joseph Hernandez. Ms. Penya was also the Torino Lounge owner. And in January of 2016, the city council suspended that live entertainment permit, and that was due to incidents that involved law enforcement, parking complaints from neighboring businesses and property owners. There was an outside promoter doing live entertainment that was not permitted under the permit, and there was also unpermitted formats of entertainment going on and concerns from the ABC investigators. In January of 2016, the city council revoked that live entertainment permit, and that was due to the issues that we just saw on the previous slide, and there was also a shooting incident in December with multiple victims, and the security staff at that time was uncooperative with law enforcement. In January of 2016, Ms. Penya closed the business and terminated her lease, and then in Jan -- I'm sorry, in May of 2016, Jose Hernandez and Rick Morales assumed ownership of the lounge and submitted a business license application, and then they also submitted a live entertainment permit in July of 2016. However, there was some dispute between the two parties, and they dissolved their partnership, and so that live entertainment permit was not issued. So the applicants, again this evening, are Jose and Joseph Hernandez. They submitted an application in March originally for live entertainment. At that time, we informed them that it was not likely to be approved and that they should operate the business and show that they could operate the business responsibly. In May of 2018, the applicant withdrew that application and then resubmitted a revised application, and we also gave them the same advice at that time, that they should operate the business for months before applying for live entertainment. This has been reviewed, and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has recommended denial. The Los Angeles County Deputy District Attorney has also recommended denial. The Public Safety Department recommends denial, as does the Community Development Department. So due to these recommendations of denial from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, the deputy district attorney, and the city's Public Safety Department, we do not believe this is in the interest of the city to approve this live entertainment permit. There have been associated offenses, violations, complaints, law enforcement incidents that are directly and indirectly related to past live entertainment at the property, and the current applicant has connections to those original council permit applications. And again, we would recommend that they operate the business and show that they can operate it responsibly. And we're recommending that you adopt resolution 18016, denying the city council permit for live entertainment at De Lucia, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, before we go into that, I just failed to mention to you that we do have three speakers' cards, and the applicant who is here tonight also has some information that I'll pass out to you right now that he would like to share.
Okay. Do we want to have questions first?
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Can he come up so we can ask him some questions?
Joseph?
My name is Joseph Hernandez. I'm here to represent De Herdez Corp. and De Lucia Bar. My family is here with me and some De Lucia supporters.
I have a question. Are you -- so, just so I'm aware, on the background and history, are you related to the other applicants that they had had their license revoked from the city?
No, I'm not. I am not related to them.
Okay, so can you tell me what the plan is that, I'm sure you guys put forth a plan, that you wouldn't have the same type of problems that the other persons did who had the application prior or the permit?
We strongly reject the incidents that have occurred at such property. It is in our best interest to make a safe environment for our patrons and for the city and to collaborate with law enforcement in any government agency.
Will you have any type of your own security there?
At this point, we don't. Since we don't have live entertainment music, we actually close early during the week, and we close sometimes early on the weekends.
How long have you been in charge of that location?
I was helping my dad and his partner last year, and this year I have been managing the venue, and we have not had any incidents.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Question, thank you, John. I thought in the presentation, unless I misunderstood it, there was something about associated with the past operators?
Yes, that was.
Could you explain that to me?
Sure. Mr. Hernandez was in partnership with the previous owner of the business, the bar, and he was part of the application for the previous live entertainment permit.
Right, but nothing to do with this one?
With this new one, yes. He is with his dad, who is the property owner.
Oh, so, because I remember this whole thing going on and the promoter and all the promises and stuff he made. Is that one out of the picture, as far as we know? The guy that ran the venue before Joseph?
Yeah, the promoter that the previous business owner applicant for live entertainment permit hired, that promoter is no longer in the picture.
Correct. We have no partnerships. We have -- we intend not to have any affiliation with promoters, with outside promoters, and this is a family-owned business.
And for staff, several times you mentioned that your recommendation would be that they continue to operate the business and show that they are capable of, you know, a safe environment. What kind of timeframe are you looking at for that? And if, I'm sorry, caveat here, and if they're not going to operate with the same level of entertainment in mind, how can we really judge that? Because they're not operating now with the live entertainment in those hours, so if they stay up for the next year and they don't have any problems, you can't really judge it still because it's not the same type of venue.
That's correct. Our recommendation, though, is that they operate the business, we would think for 12 months might be reasonable, to show that they can operate the business responsibly without any... without any public safety issues, and then it might be the time to consider live entertainment.
And in the proposal that they sent to you with the business application, have they made any plans for mitigating the problems that were there, like non-working cameras, severe parking issues, lack of control over the venues? Did they submit anything proactively to you to deal with those things?
No, they did not.
That is not true. I did submit a plan to address those issues. I believe John King is present here. I actually did submit a plan stating that we will not be bringing onboard any outside promoters, that we were going to have to certify security guards with certification, and to be screened by public safety. I also mentioned in my report that we were going to reduce the amount of entertainment that we were going to have.
Do we have a copy of that?
We didn't receive, though, a parking plan, on how they were going to deal with the complaints from the neighbors for parking.
And as you know, that was a major issue. Do you have plans for that, Joseph?
Yes, actually, we do have a property, Patterson and Garfield Avenue, used to be owned by Spray Zone. I'm actually-- I have been talking to him to help us with the parking situation.
So he would-- you wouldn't be taking over that business for parking? It would just be a shared thing during your hours of operation?
Correct.
And if I could ask staff, if that was feasible, is it conforming?
Yes, we've done parking off-site previously. Generally, if it's in close proximity to the location, I'd have to look at a map, and I'm not sure that this is very close to the location. I'm not sure you would want to park up there and walk down to De Lucia.
Well, I'll just go on the record, Joseph, of saying that I always, you know, believe in giving a second chance when it's merited, but you had some really serious problems there. You were the one that stood before the council and promised us nothing would happen, and then the next two weeks, there was a shooting. So I am holding back a little bit, but what I would like to do is I would like to table the item, and I would like to see what you submitted as a plan to mitigate all of the problems. And in conjunction with that, my decision would be based a lot, too, on you having some kind of agreement, signed agreement, with Spray Zone, and that it meets city standards, and that it's just not a pie in the sky wish, because that was a huge issue. I think if people hadn't been piling up outside, which they were all the time, maybe you wouldn't have some of the incidents. But I think you only have 19 parking spaces or something.
Actually, I do have a total of, I believe, 29 parking spaces.
How many?
29 parking spaces in the rear parking lot, and 7 to 9 in the front of the business.
Yeah, and it's just not enough for what's there. You'd have to have that Spray Zone location. So I'm just going to go on record that I'd like to make a motion that it's tabled. I'd like to see the report that he said that he submitted to the city. I want to see a plan, and I want to see some kind of agreement with Spray Zone that's validated by the city before I would entertain a second chance.
Second that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have a few speakers' cards, so if there's more questions for the applicant, we can go into-- it's up to you, Mr. Vice Mayor, but we can go into the--
May I also say that I'm not just the only applicant. My dad is also a business owner.
Right.
And we have been part of this community for over 40 years, and it is in our best interest to make the community a better place, to bring culture, arts, and music to the city. It's not necessarily hip-hop and banda music that we are attracted, that we want for our venue. We want to bring something different to the city.
And I want that, too. We just want it to be safe.
I think if you put together a good plan and bring it back, I would be inclined to want to give you a second chance, just because there's-- you have to be held to the same standards as other industry that violate all the time. So I would be inclined to give you a second chance if you put together a good business plan.
Thank you.
But we have some other speakers' cards.
Yes, sir. So the first one was Mr. Joseph Hernandez. Our second speaker card is Mr. Jose Hernandez of Downey, and he wants to speak on the side of him.
Good evening, council members, city officials. My name is Jose Hernandez. I'm Joseph's brother, and my parents are over here. And I understand there were a lot of issues, and I clearly understand, and I agree with you, that we have to be cautious about the businesses that come to the city. We all grew up in the city of Paramount. We all went to Paramount High School, and my parents still live there. We have children's cousins living there. But one thing that I want to emphasize is that we have different owners. There were the owners of the place, but not the owners of the business, and they had limitations about what happens there. They're the owners of the business for the first time, which was one of my parents' dreams, have a business in the city of Paramount. They're different. Somebody at a house is causing problems. It's not the house causing problems, it's the people renting the house, living in the house. In this case, now they're in control of what happens there. So I would beg you to give them an opportunity to see how they function, but if there's no live entertainment, how can they prove to you that it's going to happen? So if they can get to the parking issue, I would beg you to give them a chance to prove you that they can function in a very responsible way, and that they can bring cultural music to the city. The first speaker was talking about why do people come to Paramount? Not much. We need to bring culture, we need to bring back-- this is my city. I went to Paramount High School. The whole family still has very close ties to the city. I remember Mr. Guian, and I see how passionate you are about safety. So do we, and we certainly don't want those things to happen here. So I would really appreciate if you considered the permit once they take care of the issue of parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, our next speaker's card is from Marcus and Liza Laurent.
How you doing? My name is Marcus Laurent. I moved to Paramount about 10 months ago with my wife. We love Paramount. There's many things we love Paramount, about Paramount. One thing we did not like about Paramount is we could not go to date night in Paramount. My wife still makes me take her to date night. My wife works in Santa Monica, I work in Culver City. We'd stay on the West Side for date night, which is every Friday. We happened to come across De Lucia's about two months ago. Love De Lucia's, it's awesome. Joseph's awesome. And I'm listening to what you guys are talking about, and you guys being in the position you're in, you know how to run a business. It sounds like you have a lot of prejudices against an address, an event, that happened three years ago, rather than taking into consideration the gentleman running the business. If you haven't been there, you're missing out. If you think it's a problem, it's because you haven't been there. I'm telling you, it's a very laid-back-- I had lamb chops. Where can you get lamb chops in Paramount? Nowhere. My wife had lobster ravioli. This is not a gun shop. This is not-- they don't even serve whiskey or tequila. It's wine and beer. It's a very nice, laid-back place. I go there maybe two, three times a week? Two, three times a week. I don't-- I'm cheap. I'm very cheap. My wife can tell you, I don't buy things. I don't mind spending my money there, because, one, I like spending money in the community. We have the guy that comes by with shaved ice and fruit inside. I don't know what that is, but I buy from him because I want to keep my money in my community. That's what I like to do. He's got a good business, and you guys are capping him. You're saying, ah, we'll do business there for a year at a very low, you know, volume, and then maybe we'll think about letting you rise to where you want to be one day. And that's just unfair. It's unjust. I mean, this guy can go places. I bring the owner of my company there. I bring family from out of town. I bring people that make money, and I bring them there, and they're like, dude, we should have an event here. We can have like this and that. And they sit down with Joseph, and Joseph sits down with us because he doesn't have a lot of customers, because he doesn't have that bring-'em-in crowd yet, because he doesn't have an entertainment license. And they all give him the same advice. Ah, you know what you should do? You should have like-- you can have a band on stage. I mean, he's got the stage, but he does not have the music, and it would be nice, especially for a date night, which my wife still makes me take her to. I thank you for your time. It's my first meeting, so I apologize if I took too much of your time, but I invite all of you to come down there. I will treat you, and I'm cheap. That's how much I want some music there. Anyway, thank you for your time. I'm Marcus Laurent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
No, sir, but if we may, from a staff point of view, if the motion is to come up with-- for the applicant to meet with staff to come up with a plan, if the motion can be put forth to that he works directly with public safety, specifically with our partners at the LA County Sheriff's Department and the LA County Deputy District Attorney, because-- Sergeant, if you can, can you hold that up? These are the binder there. These are the issues that we've been-- that the Sheriff's Department has been dealing with. So there's quite a bit of history here, and we know that we're-- as expressed by the council, there is a desire to give the applicant a second chance, and we're all for that as well on the staff level. But if it could be in direct correlation with law enforcement, that they work out this plan, that's my last--
I would amend my motion, and I think that the applicant expressed that he's more than willing to do that, to work with whatever entities are necessary. So I would amend the motion to include that.
Before we continue with that, do we make other locations like this work with the Sheriff's Department to formulate a game plan? Or is it going to be specific to them? Because that's not fair.
No, I'll let you answer that.
People that have live entertainment permits work with the Sheriff's Department.
So they do work--
They do work with them, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're being held to the same standard, and then that binder doesn't reflect them, I'd just like to say, too. They're talking about being the owner of the property and now taking responsibility as to the business itself, so you can't hold the sins of your past on them.
Yes, I ran them--
Yeah, I know Joseph. I've known Joseph for a long time, and I know he's had some tough times over there, and-- but I think if we maybe can come through with a plan that we all readily approve, and he gets along and gets stuff straightened out with the Sheriff's Department, I have no problem giving him another chance.
So where is the motion at, actually?
The motion is to table the item until Joseph meets directly with public safety and any other entities in the city necessary to formulate a plan to submit to the council on how he's going to deal with and mitigate the issues that have caused problems in the past.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, before you take a vote, it looks like Ms. Laurent-- Am I correct? Okay, she-- Mrs.-- I'm sorry, Mrs. Laurent is the other half of the speaker's card here.
Oh, okay.
This is-- I'm a public speaker at my hospital, and so this is a little weird. It's out of my element, but I wanted you to know that I work for Santa Monica UCLA Medical Center. I have been working for UCLA for nearly 20 years. I expect to work for UCLA for another 20 years, until the wheels fall off my body. You need to know, I have a 26.2-mile commute after work, so that's two miles, that's two miles, that's two hours or more from Santa Monica. Sometimes I'm teaching late nights, and I'm coming home late. And we moved from Culver City. I knew nothing of Paramount. I grew up in Carson. And like my husband, Tony, told you, is that I'm-- I need to have date night every Friday. I work hard, okay? Del Taco's fine, but I need something else. You know, cooking is not my forte. We bought our first house. I didn't mean to cry, but it took a lot to get that house, and I want to love my neighborhood. But in order to love my neighborhood, I want to invest in my neighborhood, and so I don't want to go to the West Side to eat at a restaurant for date night. Joseph and his family were there every Friday. If it's not Friday, it's Thursday. I will stick through two hours of traffic, knowing that I'm a woman, and I'm not going to put myself-- and I am a good judge of character with the neighborhood I surround myself with. I prayed over this, and you know, I understand the issues. I see a binder, I deal with Cal OSHA, I deal with-- and I understand that they're right. I see all sides of this, but I wish I should give them a chance. I have nothing coming into this, except that I expect to live in the city of Paramount for the next 30-plus years, and I would like to go to multiple places. And like the gentleman said earlier, I'm on Instagram every day, trying to find out where's the nearest place I want to go to, because I don't want to spend my gas going anywhere else, and I want to put it into the city. So my husband will treat you. We do have a table that we sit at all the time that's reserved, and we have no problem getting you an Uber home. If parking is an issue, because really it shouldn't be, because everyone Ubers now. So anyways, I appreciate your time, and my gosh, I actually got the 18 minutes.
I only have one issue with something that you said, UCLA. I'm still paying tuition for USC for my kids, so that's the only issue I see.
I'm sorry about that, but should you need help in the hospital, I am your person. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
John? Okay, so Vice Mayor, you have a motion, and you have a second from Hoffmeyer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. If you don't mind, Vice Mayor, staff still has one more comment. A director, a public safety director.
Good evening. The sergeant and I would like to just voice some of our concerns. I know that it's been said that Joseph was not involved in some of these incidents. He was. He's the original-- he's on the original application for live entertainment permit, so I just wanted to make that clear. I personally met with him several times after the incidents occurred. We discussed a promoter. What happened, it was pretty much the same venue as is being presented today. All of a sudden, they added a different venue, which was Wednesday night, and we pulled them in there, said we're concerned about this, and we have all this detail with the Deputy District Attorney there, as well as law enforcement personnel there. I would love to work with Joseph, but I do need him to step up, and when we have concerns that he is available to us, even as the business owner, he should be held accountable to give us access to the cameras in a timely fashion. If it wasn't his business, I understand, but as a property owner, he must hold his tenants accountable, and he did not. And we are looking at someone who was shot in the leg and in the arm, and there were multiple victims. So we're here to save lives and also help Joseph succeed in his business, but not in putting other lives in jeopardy.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Couple of concerns that I have when I started looking into the Torino Lounge was that in December of 2014, Joseph Hernandez was called in by the public safety staff regarding concerns of multiple violations that were occurring at the lounge. And in looking through some of the calls for service, between April and August of 2015, there was continued violations of their live entertainment permit. They were playing music past curfew, which was 11:00 p.m. There were increased citizen complaints regarding the parking issues, small parking lot. And then in December of 2015 is when one of the shootings occurred. And from documentation that I have, was that their security staff were not cooperative with my deputies, and they also tampered with crime evidence. And then the other thing that was documented was management and the employees were also uncooperative with deputies during that shooting. So even the staff, you know, didn't cooperate. I talked to some of the deputy staff that have worked for Paramount longer than I have, and they all said that they waited for Wednesday nights, when they started their shift, what's going to happen at the Torino Lounge tonight? That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
I have a question on-- we all know shootings are random, and they can take place anywhere. Is there a higher propensity at a bar? Yeah, maybe. But when you talk about tampering with crime evidence, were charges filed?
That was part of the investigation. I don't have the case. It was before I got here.
Because that's a strong allegation to allege that somebody was tampering with evidence if there was no crime, and we're talking about three years ago, four years ago. And I'd just like to say that if they need to meet with the Sheriff's Department or staff, that I hope you give them an opportunity to present-- And we're talking about three years ago, four years ago. And I'd just like to say that if they need to meet with the Sheriff's Department or staff, that I hope you give them an opportunity to present their business plan without your biases, because clearly, right now, you have a lot of biases based on, you know, past pattern of conduct. But they're telling you that this is a new management. And even as an owner, if I rent my house out to somebody else, I legally don't have the authority to do some of the things that other people do. I understand if it's an exigent circumstance like that was, too. But what I'm saying is, as a whole, you can't hold him accountable if it wasn't being run as his business. And so I just hope that you are not biased when you have to work with him, and you give him a fair shot.
If I could just, Vice Mayor Hanson, I just, I want to be clear about this. I've worked with Joseph for many, 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 many years. And I'm actually counting on the fact, Joseph, that you have a wife and a baby now, and that's changed your lifestyle a whole lot. And in defense of the staff's position, there were multiple public hearings that took place here, and Joseph stood before us, and he made the personal promises. He did take on that commitment. He did say, "The buck stops here." And I'm, like I said, so I get it. I understand your reluctance in believing somebody who's made commitments to us before. My position on this is, this is a huge financial investment, and because of the history that we do have, I don't think that the tolerance level that existed in the beginning while we tried to work it out was okay. You may remember the last time they came before us, and we said, "One more incident," and we're yanking that permit, because we extended that permit on three or four different occasions and gave chance after chance after chance. So that will be the same thing. There's a history there now. You have to live with your history. That's the same for anybody in life. You know, when mistakes are made, you have to be accountable for those, and you make a difference. I have no doubt, having worked with you for many, many years, if you put everything that you have into this, Joseph, and your father and your brother are there by your side, and your heart and soul is about keeping people safe, that you can do it. But you've got a, you've got an uphill battle ahead of you, and those previous promises were made to most of the people on this body directly by you. So we do have a reason for concern. Having said that, I think that second chance you're asking for is going to depend largely on what you present to this body and your plan moving forward. We want you to be successful. Show us you can do it. With that, may I move my motion now?
It's still up to Vice Mayor.
A second to the motion.
A motion by Lemons and a second by Hoffmeyer. And that was to table this at this point.
And come up with a business plan with the partnership with law enforcement.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number nine, revised scope of work, revision number one to the farmer's market agreement with SoCal Farmers Market. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. We're in our second year of an agreement for the farmer's market that's held every Friday at Progress Park. Tonight, we're asking for your approval on a revised scope of work for the farmer's market agreement, and our Parks and Rec Director, Dave Johnson, will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Vice Mayor and City Councilmembers, the farmer's market item before you this evening is a ministerial item that makes minor changes to the scope of work exhibit in the farmer's market agreement with SoCal Farmers Market. These changes will apply to the market operator as they go into their third year of operation. The changes clarify and make more specific the operational hours of the market, when the site should be completely clean and vacated, their responsibility in making fee payments to all applicable government agencies, and which party is responsible for setup, what types of vendors are allowed at the market, and requires authorization and communication of informational vendors invited to the market. We are recommending that the City Council approve or modify this revised scope of work, revision number one, to the agreement with SoCal Farmers Market for our weekly farmer's market at Progress Park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Moved by Lemons, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 10, sublease agreement with the United States Postal Service for parking at 7150 Somerset Boulevard. Staff report?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. For almost 10 years, we've had an agreement with Edison to lease their land, which is located next to the post office. From then, we then entered into a sublease with the Postal Service for parking, for public parking, right next to the Paramount Post Office. The sublease expires at the end of this year, and the Postal Service reached out to us to renew the lease in advance of the expiration date. And with that, I'll turn it over to John Carver, who will handle the item. John?
Me, John. Okay, so this is a request to extend a sublease agreement with the post office, and the easement area that's used for 25 parking places is measures about 86 feet by 330 feet. And as John mentioned, the agreement was first entered into in 2009 and expires at the end of this year. And the agreement came about in 2008. There were numerous complaints to the city about congestion and vehicular accidents in the post office parking lot. The post office in Edison could not agree on a lease, so the city entered into a lease with Edison and then a sublease with the post office. The new sublease agreement would be from January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2023, and there would be an option for a five-year extension. The first year's rent would be a little bit more than $11,000, and it would increase by 3% each year. And there are some issues with trash and parking that we are dealing with right now in the Edison easement parking. And here's a look at the post office, looking in a westerly direction, and the parking on the Edison easement, also looking west. And here is the aerial of the post office outlined in yellow and the parking on the easement outlined in red. And we're recommending that you approve the sublease agreement with the post office for parking at 7150 Somerset Boulevard, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemons to approve this sublease. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 11, resident permit parking requests. Staff report?
Yes, sir. The next item involves resident permit parking throughout the city. Tonight, we're requesting that the City Council direct the city attorney to draft a moratorium on resident permit parking application. And as you'll hear, the reason for resident permit parking that was adopted in the 1970s was to prevent customers or patrons of nearby businesses and institutions from taking up resident permit parking in nearby neighborhoods. Unfortunately, those initial purposes have evolved to where we are today, which is somewhat pitting neighborhood against neighborhood. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, who will handle this item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Once again, good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, or yes, I'm sorry. Today's item, like John mentioned, is a report detailing the history of resident permit parking requests and how public safety has handled these requests. We'll start with the background. In 1971, I'm sorry.
Can you hold off a second while we get the screens up? Jonathan, can you get the screens up for the council?
Who's that?
It's went down, no.
I think it's just mine and Darrell's and yours.
No, mine's off. Oh.
Mine, Darrell's, and yours.
These are off as well.
The other three are up.
Can put in...
Technical difficulties.
Yeah. It's rebooting. Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, if you want to continue, whoa, the mics are off, too.
My mic's on.
Is it? Our new system?
Lights on, but the mics...
I think he's rebooting everything, so we'll have to wait.
Little bug.
It's a...
Person, the positive.
We did it by a lemon. Don't worry. There it goes. I can hear the mics. There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Ms. Lopez?
Okay.
Yes, please. I think your mic's off, maybe.
Okay, great. So today's item is a report detailing the history of the resident permit parking requests and how public safety has handled these requests. Just a brief background, in 1971, the City Council adopted ordinance 305 to amend section 29-6 of the Paramount Municipal Code. And this ordinance authorized the installation of traffic control signals such as stop signs, right-of-way signs, and also street sweeping signs. And then in 1983, the City Council adopted ordinance number 556. And in combination of both of these, we created the first resident permit parking for the neighborhood that's outlined here. And this was created because we were getting complaints from residents in nearby area or the neighborhood that were being affected by the Paramount Swamp Meet parking. So this was going way back. Since then, the Paramount Swamp Meet has additional parking. Since the adoption of ordinance 556, the City Council has amended this chapter 29 times. The regulation of parking permit in certain neighborhoods has been established to address congestion and limited parking in those areas. In the past seven years, the Public Safety Department has received 11 requests, and nine of those 11 requests have been received from 2016 to 2017, so you could see a spike. As of today, we have five additional requests that have been received and are pending. This is just a graph of the requests and also the neighborhoods that have been approved for resident permit parking. As you can see, there is a trend, and we do anticipate that to go up if we don't make any changes to the way we handle our requests for resident permit parking. If we look at the initial or the first original ordinance, the original intent was to alleviate parking in residential areas that were being affected by a nearby business or also some type of establishment, whether it was a Paramount Adult School, if you guys remember that, it used to affect a lot of the residents over by Coke and Passage in that area, and they have resident permit parking. The last couple of permits have really been one block that is requesting resident permit parking, and that is to address other Paramount residents from parking in their block or on their block. So we're seeing that trend where it's no longer people from the outside coming in and parking on the streets, residential streets. It's more one neighborhood versus another neighborhood that do not want them parking in front of their homes. The last resident permit parking that was approved, which was ordinance number 1094, this one has created many, many complaints and also disputes among the residents that live there. We've actually seen an increase in disputes and also calls and complaints about people parking in one specific block, which only affected seven homes. We took this item to our Public Safety Commission meeting in May, and we provided the same information that we're providing here. And after hearing comments, and at that same meeting, we had a resident permit request that was pending, and they chose to put it on hold until the City Council has an opportunity to look at this item. The Public Safety Commission recommended that the City Council establish a temporary stay and allow public safety or city council, I mean, I'm sorry, city staff to evaluate and establish and base informal criteria for future requests. We understand that availability in any neighborhood in Paramount, as well as Southern California, and we know that the population, as it grows, this is going to be a trend, and it's going to be continued in the future, that we have to provide additional parking or look at the parking shortage. So with that, we recommend that the City Council direct the city attorney to prepare a moratorium ordinance suspending any approval of future resident permit parking requests. And at the next council meeting, and direct staff to develop a formal criteria for resident permit parking. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I have one. Did you say that there were five pending right now?
Yes, I have five on my desk that have requested resident permit parking. We haven't done anything with them because we're looking at this development of a formal criteria.
Well, in the event that we have this moratorium, they would fall underneath the moratorium.
Correct.
Okay. For the questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemons to direct the city attorney to prepare this moratorium. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 12 is a public hearing resolution number 18.015 confirming the diagram and assessment and providing for annual assessment levy for landscape maintenance assessment district number 81-1. We're going to open the public hearing at this time, process objections to levy the, or to annual levy of assessments for landscape maintenance assessment district number 81-1 for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And this is an announcement that notice of this hearing has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, being Division 15 of the Streets and Highway Code of the State of California, and that the affidavits of publication posting are on file in the city clerk's office. And this is also an announcement that no written protests of any kind were received.
So therefore, we don't need to hear anything about written protests at this point in time.
That is correct.
But it is a public hearing. And first off, do you want to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Opposed?
You want me to close the public hearing?
Second.
Been moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by...
Lori.
Lori? Do you want me to call you Lori? I was going to say...
Go ahead, why not? I'm sure you've called me worse.
Bye, Gillen. Any discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. There's no percentage there?
No, sir. So now we need the motion to approve. That was the motion to close the public hearing.
That was the motion to close the public hearing. I need motion to approve.
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved and seconded... You're getting me all confused with all these things now, with the move stuff that I didn't do before. Moved by Lemons, seconded by Gillen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. There's no percentage there?
No, sir. So now we need the motion to approve. That was the motion to close the public hearing.
That was the motion to close the public hearing.
Right.
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved and seconded... You're getting me all confused with all these things now, with the move stuff that I didn't do before. Moved by Lemons, seconded by Gillen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number 13, introduction of fiscal year 2019 proposed budget.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. The final item is the introduction of the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. We've put together a budget that once again balances the policy direction that we receive from the City Council, as well as the needs of the community, with a flat flow of revenue. And this has been the challenge for us, experiencing this flat general fund revenue stream while trying to meet community priorities. Nonetheless, we have an exciting fiscal year ahead of us with the fun events and activities we had over the past few years. We also have managed to add a couple of new events. Additionally, we're making some very meaningful infrastructure events, namely in roads and water. And again, this is an introduction of the budget. We will have a more intense review going department by department and request your approval of the budget at the June 19th meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Ms. Karina Lam Lu, who will handle the item.
Thank you, John. Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council, as John mentioned, tonight is our first introduction of next year's fiscal year 19's budget. As we traditionally, we always do, tonight is we look at it from a big picture perspective is an introduction. In two weeks, at the study session, we'll look at it in a much greater detail. As John mentioned, you know, despite stagnant revenues, we are proposing a deficit at this time. We are very happy to report that the proposed budget continues to fund for all services that you have come to expect, from law enforcement to recreation to street maintenance. We also continue our robust capital improvement program, including many street improvements and a construction of a new water well. With that, we'll start with revenues. As we mentioned earlier, revenues are flat when comparing next year's to this year's. When we, all city revenues combined, including the general fund, the water department, and restricted grants, total city revenue is about $44.8 million in fiscal year 19. The unrestricted portion, which is the general fund, we have a minor decrease, which offset by increase in the restricted category. in fiscal year nineteen. The unrestricted portion, which is the general fund, we have a minor decrease, which offset by increase in the restricted category. So overall, there is an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars when compared next year's to this year's. The high mark in fiscal year two thousand thirteen was related to a large state grant that we will see for the construction of Salute Park. Now, this is the same chart as the previous slide, which is the overall revenue. What we added here is a general fund portion in green. As you can see, when comparing current year to next year, the makeup of the general fund and restricted fund is very similar. The general fund has a stage drop, about forty-five thousand dollar decrease next year, while there's an increase of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar in restricted funds. I do want to point out that there is about six point seven million dollar source that is not included in the revenue here. That is because it's a loan that we secured with the I Bank for the construction of the new well. It is not classified as revenues, but it is a source that will offset the high expenditures you will see later on in expenditure for the construction of the new well. Earlier, we inserted general fund into overall revenues. Here, we added sales tax into the general fund in brown. As you can see, sales tax makes up about thirty percent of the total unrestricted funds or the general fund. We are budgeting about a hundred thousand dollar increase in sales tax next year at about seven point nine million dollars. While we see sales tax is pretty stable, this is, there is very little growth. I left the fiscal year two thousand eight data in this chart, and you can see when comparing fiscal year nineteen to more than ten years ago to two thousand eight, sales tax is now a little over the pre-recession level in two thousand eight. The blue bar represents the total general fund revenues, including MVL, property tax, which are expected to increase in two thousand nineteen. However, it has also been offset by negative adjustments such as licenses and other categories. Here's the history of sales tax. Our assumption for next year is that fuel prices will continue to stay at current level, and retail establishment will remain about the same. The sales tax estimate is about seven point nine million dollars. Once again, you can look at that and compare fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year two thousand eight. The growth is very little, so hopefully our shop local campaign is going to make an impact in our community and that we have no more sales tax leakage to nearby communities. As part of the budget review, we'll look at utility users tax as a follow-up to measure P. Since measure P was passed in two thousand fifteen, we have been receiving higher amount of utility users tax. At the same time, we also experienced utility users tax refund or exemption requests, so there has been some decreases in recent years. For next year, we are budgeting about the same, at about three point five eight million. Utility users tax is a significant source to continue paying for essential services, especially after we lost five to six million dollar revenues a year as a result of the elimination of our former redevelopment agency. Utility users tax total is close to half of our total sales tax. It's a significant source to continue pay for services, as I mentioned. Utility users tax also help balance the volatility of sales tax when we heavily rely on fuels. Annually, we perform utility users tax analysis and making sure providers are submitting the correct percentage of utility users tax. As for fees, the only proposed fee increase for next year is business license. As the consumer price index was three point six percent this past year, we are proposing to increase business license fee by three point six percent. Next, we'll cover expenditures. The brown bar here represents our operation, and the blue bar represents capital improvement projects. In our operations, as you can see when comparing current year to next year, the makeup of the expenditures in terms of funding source is very similar. Next year, we'll expand approximately forty-three million dollars, about seven hundred thousand dollar increase on next year. The forty-three million dollar here includes all operational cost increase, such as contract increases from the Sheriff Department and a potential recall election. Also, the proposed cost of living adjustment for employees is also included here. As for capital improvements, there is a huge jump, about nine million dollars increase, mainly related to the construction of a new water well and other capital improvement projects such as street resurfacing. Once again, we have obtained a loan from the I Bank to pay for the well construction, so we do have source to offset this huge expenditure. This chart shows you how our expenditures are distributed in our operating department. Our operating budget, not including the water utility, is about thirty-three million dollars. As you can see, among all our operating departments, public safety is our largest expenditure on this pie. We are allocating thirty-six percent of our resources to public safety. With regard to community promotion, the budget contains funding for all city signature special events, and we continue to fund sixteen community groups in fiscal year nineteen. The funding amount is based on a matrix, including the number of Paramount residents being served. A couple of highlights here, Friends of the Library has been added in the current year and will continue next year. Also, we now have a contract with the YMCA to provide direct services to our community. Now, we have budgeted the YMCA here in the community promotion, but it is going to be put under recreation because recreation is managing this contract with the YMCA. Now, every year, we evaluate our events and that we are providing. Next year, we are adding a couple more, including the celebration of the fifty-yearth anniversary for the Santa train, and we are also adding a veteran celebration fair. Next, we'll touch on human resources. Star after-school program remains a big part of our operations, approximately two million dollars a year. Because of the minimum wage requirement, the state has increased our funding for the current year after we adopted budget back in July. The increase in funding was intended to pay for salary increase to comply with the state's minimum wage requirement. So at this time, we're proposing a new pay scale for all the star part-time staffing, ranging from four percent to sixteen percent effective in the current year. Again, the cost is fully paid for by the star grant. Now, the Consumer Price Index last year was three point six percent increase. We are proposing a four percent COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment to all full-time and part-time employees. It is to keep up with the inflation and also to deal with the minimum wage requirement that we are also facing. At this time, we are still waiting for the final results of the class and comp study. Once we have that, we'll come back to you and evaluate our overall compensation package when compared to other cities. In the public safety arena, this is our largest single department. In fiscal year nineteen, we have budgeted close to twelve million dollars for the department, about three hundred forty-eight thousand dollar more than the current year. The increase is mainly related to the higher cost of sworn patrol from the L.A. County Sheriff Department. They have implemented over three percent increase in the contract and additional point five percent increase in a liability trust fund. We are paying a total of ten point five percent next year. At budget time, not only we review our cost of providing services, we also evaluated effectiveness of our operation. We're now proposing to realign our traffic enforcement deployment. Currently, we contract for a dedicated deputy. We're proposing to use overtime to cover that. Now, our public safety department, along with our surgeon, both believe that using overtime will provide more flexibility and also will be more effective, and will be able to dedicate resources during peak hours that we otherwise could not have provided. We will discuss this further at the study session. This budget in the public safety department also absorbs contract increases for animal control and crossing guard services. Other than that, the department will continue funding for neighborhood preservation efforts, the Good Neighbor Program, and an active neighborhood watch program as well. In recreation, not only they are maintaining the current level of services, including their star after-school program, also the budget continues to support for PAP, the nonprofit organization that city has established for scholarship purposes. New events that started this year, such as the Heritage Festival, we continue next year, as well as new program. As far as new programs, the department is always looking for fun activities. Next year, we'll be providing photo opportunities with Easter Bunny. As always, Recreation Department will continue to maintain and improve our parks and facilities. And in Public Works, this is another big department. They handle maintenance of all facilities, landscapes, vehicles, and roads. The budget keeps the same level of service next year, also absorb all contract increases, including tree trimming and landscape maintenance. They also have included, once again, the sidewalk repairs in the department. There's also appropriation for environmental compliance, such as for storm water compliance. They are also proposing to purchase three leased replacement vehicles. In water utility, we mentioned about the new water well construction. The new water well construction also comes with a debt service. We need to now start paying back the loan from the I Bank. The budget continues to fund for all installations of services and hydrants and water valves at various locations. They're also budgeting one leased vehicle replacement. In terms of our water rates, as you know, we continue to maintain some of the lowest rates in our region. At this time, we are recommending a seven percent rate increase to offset the production cost increase in the fiscal year. The last increase was implemented in June two thousand six. In addition to operational cost increase and the new loan payment we need to start paying, which is about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, we also implemented new governmental accounting standards, so-called GASP, in here that add additional a hundred seventy-one thousand dollars to the expenditure for pension purpose. Total of this item adds up to three hundred and five thousand dollars additional expenditures with the operation costs imposed by MWD and Central Basin for groundwater production and portable water purchase. Other operational costs increase as well. We budgeted a very conservative revenue projection at this time because of water conservation. We're projecting a deficit to the tune of four hundred and nine thousand dollars this time. Now, we, with this deficit, we have about over three million dollars in the fund balance, so we'll be using a fund balance to pay for the deficit. But of course, water consumption may go up, so we'll watch it very carefully. If water consumption does go up, we will increase our revenue projection, and if the well is done, then we'll be less dependent on portable water and therefore will lower production cost. So at that point, our finances will be better, and of course, we'll watch this carefully, and we'll update you during mid-year budgets. Next is our capital improvement project. As always, we have ambitious programs here. We will have close to thirteen million dollars total next year in fiscal year nineteen. Of that, six point eight million dollars for water projects, including a well, close to six million dollar for streets, two hundred eighty thousand dollars for park improvements, and a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar miscellaneous projects. As you can see, here's a list of projects. Other than a water well, we have a list of projects, including the Artis, Artorial Streets Resurfacing and Neighborhood Street Improvements using SB one funds and other MTA funds. We'll continue to address the medium and converting it to drought-tolerant landscape. On park and facility improvements, we have a number of projects there, including the Paramount Park Dream Bathroom renovation and Community Center AC replacement. To summarize for the general fund here, when we prepared a budget, we included three hundred eighty thousand five hundred dollars for a potential recall election for three seats. However, we have gotten new estimates from the county last week after we printed the budget documents. Here are the new estimates, including the counties and the city's supplemental costs. The total recall election could range from two hundred eighty-six thousand to five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. Now, we don't know where this is going to go, but accounting-wise, from a county standpoint, we have to recognize this potential huge expenditure. So at this time, we have a placeholder for a potential reelection at this time. We will revisit this at mid-year and make any necessary adjustments. With this recall, our original budget deficit was at three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Once again, we will use the fund balance to pay for it. The revised deficit right now is at three hundred thousand. That includes some part-time staffing changes in Community Development Department, and we'll watch this closely, and we'll update you at mid-year time. Here's the history of our general fund surpluses and deficits. At the end of fiscal year, we project a deficit to the tune of three hundred thousand in fiscal year nineteen, and for current year, there is a surplus of two hundred and sixty thousand. Of course, this is a forecast based on what we know today, after we close the book later on, and we hope to have better news for you. And when we fast forward, including the deficit into our balance, this chart shows you what we have in the bank and what money we have saved up for rainy days in a general fund. We'll end with over twelve million dollars, and restricted fund about five to five point six million, and water fund about three point three million dollars. For the success agency, we'll continue to wind down the business of the former redevelopment agency, continue to fulfill the responsibility of the bond issues and various third-party contracts. The budget reflects the enforceable obligation on our recognized obligation payment schedule. The county is taking over our oversight board's function effective July. However, we are still responsible for the managing of the funds and the submission of the ROBS, which is the recognized obligation payment schedule. For the housing authority, the budget is a holdover from the former redevelopment agency's Lomart Housing Fund, which we have received very limited ways to use the money. In fiscal year nineteen, we budgeted a five hundred thousand dollar placeholder for a potential housing project. That concludes my presentation. It's recommended the council establish June nineteenth to further review the fiscal year nineteen's budget. I'd like to thank our departments for all your help, all staff here. I know everyone worked very hard and put this together, and I'd just like to thank all of them, and we all will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
I have a comment. I just think it's kind of disheartening that, you know, the comp study isn't done. This is where we were last year when I raised the concern about full-time employees bundling it together with staff, four percent for somebody who makes fifty thousand versus four percent for somebody who makes a hundred and fifty thousand. I thought the whole point was to get a comp study so that when we got here again, we would have better answers. What direction was the company given to complete this comp study in? I mean, how long are we going to be waiting for this?
The estimate that we have been given by the consultant is that we should have something by end of summer, so we're looking July, August-ish. We were told that because we've never done such a study, that's an ambitious project to take on. The timeline was we awarded the bid in fall, October-ish, and they began working with staff to develop the classification part of it, which is descriptions of positions, a very long, arduous process to start from scratch. Had we had this study done previously, it would just be an update to it. So we're very close to having it done. The cost of living adjustment is keeping up with inflation, so we like to look at that separately from the actual class and comp study, which is how competitive our wages are with other surrounding agencies. Are we continuing to attract and retain the employees that are valuable that do the work every day for the city? That's something separate that we like to look at rather than the COLA. The COLA is the, to keep, once again, keeping up with inflation, so.
Bottom line is we're in the same place we were last year.
Very close to being done.
You said summer?
Summer, yeah.
The motion's in order.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Lemmons, second by Hoffmeyer, to establish June nineteenth for further review and adoption of fiscal year two thousand nineteen proposed budget. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillian.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes. Okay, any comments or committee reports from council members?
I attended over the month the annual conference of the Desperita Mujer Conference for two thousand eighteen, and I'm pleased to report they had a great turnout again. Over two hundred and fifty women came to the conference. They had some phenomenal speakers. Dr. Perez spoke, and Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard. And one of the great things that she did there, there was a gentleman from the city of Paramount that came up, who was a recipient of the DACA program, and came up and thanked her and told her how much that had changed his life and wanted to thank her for all of her years, which I think she said it was seventeen years she had been working on immigration reform. So that is the group that the Musa Service Club came out of that does so many great things for our city, so full speed ahead to those women who are so engaged in our community and doing such great things.
Thank you.
Hoffmeyer?
I have nothing.
Gillen?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Nice memorial presentation by the Elk Service. And then also, I attended the Women's Leadership Luncheon for the Chamber of Commerce, very inspirational, some dynamic women who were speaking. I thought it was a great, a great thing that the chamber put on, and that's about it.
Thank you. I also attended a few things. One interesting one was the School District Veteran Employees and Retirees Celebration that we actually presented certificates to, and it was pretty interesting in that they had twenty-year service people that had served in the school district for twenty years. There were seventy-three of those people, fifteen with thirty years of service and three with forty years of service, and they also had twenty-eight people that had retired. It was also at the High School Awards Program that they had last week, and there's a lot of kids there that graduate, or will be graduating Thursday with high honors and extra-high honors. I mean, they have all kinds of stuff. I, I, we barely had that many in our whole class when I went to high school there, but it was pretty interesting. Along with that too, Sunday, I attended the Topeka Sister City event and presented a certificate of recognition to them for its fifty-five years of service that they've been in existence, so that was pretty interesting. And I'm going to take a little time, I hate to do it and bore people, but this is something that's dear to me, and it concerns the Memorial Day program that was held here. Some people know, one of my best friends was on the ship that was the, the Frankie Evans, and for those who do not know, that was cut in half by an Australian aircraft carrier, uh, during the Vietnam conflict. Seventy-four of the sailors died, one of my best friends being one of them. And there's a, actually, an organization of, of the Evans, or former sailors, and so on and so forth. There was only one remains found from those seventy-four, and the sad thing is, is that none of those seventy-four names of those sailors are on the Vietnam Memorial Wall. They would, was refused to be put there. Just recently, out of the House, there was a bill that is authorized, or that, to go to the Department of the Navy, or Department of Defense, to put those seventy-four on there, and it's going to the Senate now. So that has made us very happy. My class from the high school started a, Scott, well, actually, his parents started a scholarship when he passed, which, like I say, they never did find him. And when they passed away, then that scholarship kind of went away. Our class took that over three, four years ago, and we've been raising money every year to give scholarships. We gave out about twelve scholarships this year, just from our class alone, from the high school. So hopefully, those names will get put on the Vietnam Memorial Wall. That's all I got. Anything further?
Yes, comment from staff.
Oh, yeah, I forgot you guys, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a new staff member that I'd like to introduce. Uh, her name is Margarita Mattson. She's in the front row. Why don't you stand up, Margarita, and give a wave? Um, she's... Thank you. Margarita's our new Assistant Public Safety Director, so she takes over Adriana Lopez's old position. Uh, Margarita has a Bachelor of Science degree in public relations and communications from San Jose State University. She has over fourteen and a half years of public safety experience, having worked for the cities of La Marada, Norwalk, and Santa Fe Springs in their public safety departments. Uh, she's looking forward, she says, to working with the Paramount community, and she's, enjoys spending free time with her son building Legos and robots. And that's Margarita Mattson.
Welcome. Any further comments from staff?
No, sir.
Then we'll adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting, June nineteenth. Is that going to be held here or at progress?
Yes, it'll be held here.
Okay. Now, we'll call to order the successor agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency. Uh, we have roll call, members, please.
Councilmember Gillen?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Do we need to have another motion to excuse the mayor?
Yeah, I'd make most of you excuse Diane.
What was that?
Motion to excuse Diane.
Oh, most, I... Second.
Okay, there's a second.
There it is.
That's what I was waiting for. It's been moved and seconded. Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemmons to excuse Mayor, uh, Martinez. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Consent, or public comments?
No, sir.
Consent calendar, approval of minutes?
Make move it.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Lemmons to approve the minutes of May first, 2018. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillen?
I was absent, so I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here, yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Uh, we've already pretty well set the date. Do we still need to do another one on this, another motion?
No.
So it's already been set, so no further business? This meeting is also adjourned until June nineteenth at five p.m. right here. Mr. Hoffmeyer?
Pardon?
Uh, Councilmember Hoffmeyer, you need to call to order the Housing Authority?
Housing Authority.
Oh, I didn't even see it. Uh, roll call, members, please.
Commissioner Gillen?
Here.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez? Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Chair Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Make a motion to, to excuse Commissioner Martinez now.
Second.
Have any public comments? No, sir. New business approved with the minutes of April three, 2018?
Make motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Moving second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gillen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Chair Hoffmeyer?